Okay, good evening. Good evening, welcome to this, the April 9th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. Let the roll call should, all of the members of the council are present and accounted for. Okay, I ask that you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have no proclamations and presentations tonight? Oh, do we? Nope, we don't. Okay. Okay, next, we have Citizens Forum. These are for items that are not on the council agenda. The city council, because of the Brown Act, can neither deliberate nor take action on items during the Citizens Forum, but they may be brought up for later consideration. So with that, I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. First, we have, oh, and one other thing, one of the rules we have is, I don't allow booing in the council chambers. And so, for equal time, we don't allow applauding and clapping and the like. So, that way, nobody feels intimidated when they speak. That way, they can, their back is to the audience, and they're facing the council, so they don't see if anybody disagrees with them or agrees with them. So if you do agree with the speaker, all you can do, just raise your hand. And that way, we see the support from the audience, the speaker is not intimidated, and the meeting goes along more expeditiously. So, three minutes or less, Dr. Roger Logan, Kim Logan, Joshua Dito. Yes, Mr., Dr. Logan?
Yes.
Yes, you're on. And then there's Kim Logan, and then Joshua Dito.
Yeah, Kim's my wife, she's probably not going to speak.
Okay, but she wanted to, you got three minutes each.
Okay. Yeah, I haven't been to one of these in many years, since the Mines Road thing, but feeling for the ducks and turtles, mainly in Springtown, I'd like to address the Springtown ponds and open space issue for a minute. Been catching up on that as best I can. Understand, the big project is planned, $20 million, give or take, that's not identified yet. I do commend, as I read in the paper, the council for saying, "Well, don't be taking that out of the general fund, let's find some other source to fund it as we go along." And I would like to see more updates on that, if we can do it, you know, how's the 20 mil coming along, et cetera, because it's a big, big project to undertake. Meanwhile, that leaves some things in limbo, and I've been trying to get up to speed on those, talking to people. Darren, who's here tonight, from the city, among others, and I would actually suggest that he be asked to speak, if there's time, because he's been very insightful on what's going on, and things that are not being said on social media, that would inform a lot of people, I think. That would be a good thing to do. He is an animal advocate, often out there doing his best and being unheard. The main issue that I think there's consensus on, of all the goings-on about the ponds, is to try to protect the animals as best we can. And right now, that comes down to trying to guide the homeless ducks and turtles, mainly because they're homeless. They don't know what's going on, and they're starting to cross the street and mill around and do things that are going to put them in danger. From talking to Forest Service, I understand that some of these animals are kind of in the middle. They're not native species, so the Forest Service won't get involved. And they're not people's pets, maybe they were at one time, but they're just kind of stuck. And you feel for them, like, you know, it wasn't their idea, this is their home, and they just kind of don't know what to do. And if there's ways that the people or somebody can help steer them to the other pond, you know, nab them, take them to the sanctuary, whatever can be done, it's just, I would implore the council to take a look at that as fast as can be done, given that there's dirt, I guess, scheduled to come in. And I hear that we're getting a good deal on the dirt, that's a good thing. You know, you begin to understand what's going on, it's a little tricky, I know you guys are all doing your best, but wanted to convey my feelings for the animals, and I think others will do so as well. Thanks a lot.
Dr. Logan, thank you. And what we'll do is, we'll take all the comments, and then I can have staff address some of the concerns. Thank you. Joshua Dito, Dave McGuigan, and Greg Scott.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I believe this is a travesty, because this isn't an issue about the animals, the animals are extremely important, and this is an ethics issue. And it's about morals. There's a lot of people that go to that particular park every evening, because they can't afford cable, they can't afford to go out, that's their only entertainment. So, I mean, and these people are serving you, and they're feeding you when you go out, and so, I mean, you've got to have love for those people. I was 300 pounds, and those stupid ducks, I'm rock-hard 235 right now, so, I mean, we need to do something about changing our environment, because I don't care, skate parks, that turned me into a thug. And, and I know that you can't blame it on a park, but when you just leave your kids there, and the parents aren't even watching, we act stupid. So, to me, I think having a park is more like making our world more family-oriented, instead of ladder-climbing. To me, a skate park is just another way to go, then they're going to gamble when they're older, or find other, some way to be happy, instead of just something simple, like going for a walk and looking at some ducks. I mean, and I've chased money most of my whole life, and I've got to tell you, a simple little thing, like looking at them stupid ducks and seeing a kid happy, I mean, that's priceless. We're thrown away for what? To have luxury condos and that luxury skate park, let's sell that model, we really want to do that. I mean, I'm sorry that I'm a little bit frustrated, because I know you guys are just trying to do your job, and I know how it is in business, but this is just so sad, because that's literally free therapy out there, and people are spending thousands of dollars trying to fix themselves, when all they've got to do is go out there and walk, and look at their environment. And I'm going to save my minute, so, thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Dito. Just a quick question, no, thank you. He, Mr. Dito, mentioned the condos and housing. There is no housing proposed for that 80-plus acre site?
Across the street.
Oh, okay.
It fits that model.
Thank you. But there's nothing, because this has been a misconception for quite a while, so there is no housing proposed for that entire site?
Not for, not for the Springtown golfers, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Dave McGuigan, Greg Scott, Larry Berger.
Let's consider a timeline of events. In 2010, then Officer Black was a child, has a child custody dispute complaint raised against him. He remains in uniform. In 2011, then Officer Black has two complaints of an explicitly sexual nature raised against him. He remains in uniform. In September 2015, I first brought my dissatisfaction with the Livermore police to your attention. Yes, time flies when you're having fun. In November 2015, my complaint was deemed unfounded by Chief Harris. It was shortly after that, I brought my disagreement with that assessment to the attention of the mayor. So you've had plenty of time to figure out there's a problem with your police, if you cared. In February 2016, a suspected child abuse complaint is raised against then Officer Black. He remains in uniform. In September 2016, then Officer Black is formally charged. He's finally out of uniform. You have to give, and you have to come to grips with the Livermore's extensive liability exposure. In February 2017, you interfered in the trial of ex-Officer Black, Dan Black, seeking to suppress prior complaints. When you finally choose to take action, you choose to help cover it up. Somehow, I'm sure you deluded yourself into thinking you're doing just what's best for Livermore, and not at all concerned with being embarrassed for being the mayor of a police department, whose police department has a sexual predator in uniform, endorses rampant abuses of police discretion. But let me ask you a question. Are you the kind of guy who, upon finding termites in your home, just throws on some new paint to cover up the appearance? Your interfering in the trial was just throwing some metaphorical paint on the problem. How can you possibly believe you're acting in the best interests of Livermore, when you've done absolutely nothing to address the underlying infestation? Somehow, you have the impression I'm trying to get out of something. Thing is, I've already paid my dues, there's nothing to get out of. This is about holding the Livermore police, if not to the higher standard they should be held to, at least to the standard we're held to. If we have sex with someone under the influence who can't consent, we go to jail, Livermore police stay in uniform. If we film someone without their permission while having sex with them, we go to jail, Livermore police stay in uniform. If we commit child abuse, we go to jail, Livermore police stay in uniform. If we commit perjury, we go to jail, Livermore police stay in uniform. How many multimillion-dollar lawsuits will it take you before you realize that Officer Starr and ex-Officer Black are not the problem, they're symptoms? Your problem is entrenched in the Livermore police management.
Greg Scott, Larry Berger, Tim Berry.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Marshawn, Livermore City Council, City of Livermore staff, and to those in video land, watching live or by recording, I am Greg Scott, and I speak on the issue of homeless humans in Livermore. I would like to address a comment made by Vice Mayor Warner on civility and the context of civility in the last city council meeting. Is someone sleeping in the bushes without shelter in Livermore civility? Is someone sleeping in the royals without shelter civility? Is someone sleeping and/or otherwise living in their car civility? Is it civility for those who sleep in their cars and work, and whose situation hasn't changed for years? Is it civility for a woman to be out in the rain for the night last Friday without adequate shelter? Is it civility for homeless to call the police last St. Patrick's Day against another homeless man who has threatened them on numerous occasions, and upon leaving, the officer stated, quote, "Well, you all are homeless, you will probably run into each other again," unquote? Do the homeless have no civil rights of protection under the law to be safe in their persons Is it civility not to have a toilet to defecate into? This is not India, a nation of over 1.3 billion persons, where hundreds of millions do not use a toilet. This is the United States of America, with a gross domestic product of over $17 trillion. This is California, where if this state were a separate nation, it would be in the top 10 wealthiest nations in the world. This is Livermore, with a city budget of over $100 million. And we speak of what? When we speak of civility and the context of civility in regard to the homeless. It is easy for me to vilify the city council here, and perhaps the city staff, however, vilification solves nothing. What is to be done? A small start would be vetoing the expenditure of $15,000 out of the general fund for 2-1-1 under the Human Services Grants. 2-1-1 is useless. I have direct experience with this fatuous enterprise by trying to get a woman shelter to no avail. Stop wasting the people's money on this. What does the opportunity cost? Look into new story charity. The outfit can 3D-print a tiny house for $6,500 in 24 hours. For $15,000, the City of Livermore could buy two of these houses. To the homeless that are listening, I say, have hope. Technology and events of our current zeitgeist, which literally means the time ghost of our present era, are changing more rapidly than anyone, powerful or powerless, can possibly imagine.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Larry Berger, Tim Berry, Stella Stewart.
Good evening, my name's Larry Berger, I live at 227 Travana Road. Earlier in the week, I had given an open letter to the city that I was hoping you all had received, so I don't know if you, if you need me to read that letter, if you've already received it.
I've already read it, thank you.
And then you know that we're, we're asking the city to direct its staff to allow us and all those involved with Travana Road to close our street at the Pillars by LARP. So, right now, the only problem we currently have is city staff, so what we are asking is that they get some direction from the city council. Is there any questions? I could...
Okay, thank you very much, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
All right.
Tim Berry, short-timer that he is. Stella Stewart, Carl Winty.
Evening, Mayor and City Council members.
Don't have a big smile on your face.
Well, you know, it's, it's a feeling, I just have a feeling. In July, I'll have a bigger smile, my retirement. Today, LARP received several calls and emails concerning the Springtown open space and the closing of the duck pond, and so, I felt it would be good to identify any misunderstandings in the process that we had to plan that area at the city's request. Of course, the city council and staff know the process that we've been through this past year. The city asked LARP to conduct a public input process and planning for a master plan for the reuse of that 85-acre golf course. Our consultant conducted a number of public meetings, surveys were done, options were proposed, and the LARP board forwarded a preferred option to the city council for consideration. This is a city-owned golf course, and only the city council can take action on the, on the property, as a property owner. Regarding the pond, because there was no longer a viable water supply, as reported to us by the city staff and other agencies, the pond was to be closed, and the animals humanely relocated, and the pond filled in for future use, and there were several ideas of how to use that area in the master plan. And at the December 2017 city council meeting, the council received a presentation on the preferred plan, and adopted that plan, and asked the city staff and LARP to get together and come up with funding ideas, because there was no funding source to execute the plan or to maintain what is built there. And that, of course, is, is the main trick these days, how do you fund something like that? And so, LARP wants to be a partner in this property, in the future, providing the funding sources there to develop and maintain it, just like the city staff would like a funding source there to be, to develop and maintain it. So I think that's the extent of our involvement, and we stand ready to be partners, but some people thought we closed the duck pond, and that's not true, we couldn't, if we wanted to, we're not the owners of the property, so we just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Stella Stewart, Carl Winty, John Stein.
I'm going to be referring to a letter, I'm sorry, do I hand it?
Oh, you can give it to the city clerk.
Hi, my name is Stella Stewart, I live on 118 Travana Road. This is referring back to what Larry Berger was talking about, about closing the, the road at the south end of the pillars. And I just wanted to refer you to this letter that we got from the city. If you look back up at the date, it's dated June 24, 2016. So my neighbor and I have been working on this, trying to get a gate at the end of the road, and we're not trying to take away anybody's easements, allowing the easement to stay, but allowing a key or access to that gate from everybody that has the access. So we went to the police department, the fire department, to the city, and we were all told, from most everybody, this is Kevin Duffus, that we had talked to, were telling us that, "You guys are private roads, you can do whatever you want, you, we can't tell you, you can't do that." But then, he then emailed us this letter from Lawrence Sampson, and I just want to refer to the last sentence on there, where it says, "At this time, access from the south must remain open and cannot be fenced off or gated. The narrow access east to Contractor's Way is not wide enough for truck or emergency vehicle access." Now, so that is our, what we say, roadblock from the city, this is what we received. So, there hasn't been much progress since this letter has come out. I just want to say that we have measured the access that he is talking about, next to Contractor's Way, and we have measured the distance between our pillars at the south end of the street. And our pillars are actually narrower than the access that they're talking about, next to Contractor's Way. I don't have that, that actual measurement, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of, of history, and, and what actual the roadblock is that, that we're referring to. So, the only other question I have is, is what happens now? Do you get back to us, or when, when can we expect to hear from you? Does somebody contact us, since we weren't actually on the agenda?
Right, so we can't deliberate or take action, but we can, we can have staff contact you.
Okay.
Do they have your information? I'm sure they do. That's the gentleman that you, if you can give him your contact information, that would be great.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Actually, Mr. Spence, I have her email address here, so, I'll flag that.
Okay. Paul Spence. Okay.
Carl Winty, John Stein, and Connie Cops. Mr. Winty.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I thank you all for what you do, right? You're doing a great job, and it's not an easy task all the time. Staff, same thing to say to you, Mr. Rosers, Roberts, I have this random fantasy of having a bunch of beers with you on some tropical island, because I think that would just be fun, I want to know what's in your head a little bit more. Mr. Scott, keep up the good fight, man, right? And keep coming with solutions about what can be done, because it's a great, you know, it is a well-worthy cause. I'd like to say thank you to those in uniform, there's, of the police and of the fire behind, thank you all for what you do, I salute you all. You know, the, the organization formerly known as the Friends of Livermore, though that's been shut down for violating laws, we know the survey went out, we know Page Five has been going through, I was actually a little disappointed that Page Five wasn't taken up with a full-page ad going through, I'm curious as to how that's being paid for and how it goes. But what I'm really here to talk about, and maybe Mr. Akala can help in this one, is, I don't know if it's totally clear, once the election was changed from the years of when are the term limits up, specifically for Mr. Mayor and Mr. Warner, you know, does that, are you allowed to run? And I know there's been some verbal chirp, B, from the organization formerly known as the Friends of Livermore, about lawsuits coming up or not, and I think to get that clear before it hits the, before it hits the court system, maybe it's going to hit the court system anyway, because this well-funded organization clearly has a mission to get as many new members up there and try and undo what's been done. The good work that's been done is so awesome. Mr. Carling, I shook your hand in private, I salute you in public, thank you for your words, thank you for your courage, thank you for what you're doing. It's awesome, you're standing behind what you believe in, and just keeping this all moving forward. So, I thank you for that, I wonder if you two can run, and if that happens, probably a lawsuit's going to come from this well-funded band of people that claim they're speaking for a majority of Livermore, when in fact, they're not. Again, I've got nothing but respect for people that have a point of view, so, ye five that are part of the, you know, organization formerly known as the Friends of Livermore, now the citizen group, you've got a point of view, you believe in Livermore, you love Livermore, and you respect Livermore, and I respect that and what you're doing. That said, hopefully, we can clear this up, because I do not want this to be turned over. Let's keep this moving forward, right? Good government is a process of the people, for the people, by the people, the process is functioning, let's keep it going. Again, I thank you all for what you do, your commitment to Livermore. Staff, I think you guys are awesome, you are the embodiment of good government, and one more salute to those in uniform, thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Winty. Just a quick point, since he specifically asked the question, do we know anything, Mr. Akala?
I'm assuming this is not about the beer with Mr. Roberts.
Can I be there too?
No, with regard to the question of term limits and Measure W that was passed by the Livermore voters in 2012, there was an express provision in that, it did two things, that measure did two things. One, it changed Livermore's election from odd-year elections to even-year elections, and the voters also had the opportunity to do it the other way, as far, sorry, we're always going for odd-years to even-years. The competing measures had two different provisions, one shortened terms, one extended the terms, allowed the council members at that time, and the mayor, to continue to serve for one additional year to make that transition. That measure also contained the language that said, "Notwithstanding the provisions of the prior Measure B from 2003, which set forth the term limits, you get an additional year." So with that, reconciled for all intents and purposes, that allowing to continue wasn't counted against the term limits or the length of time that's been served, and it was treated for all intents and purposes as a regular two-year and four-year term.
Okay, notwithstanding.
Correct.
All right, thank you. John Stein, Connie Cops. Mr. Stein.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. With regard to the Springtown duck pond, my children enjoyed it, my grandchildren enjoy it, although the three-year-old gets sort of frightened by the geese. But it is a resource, it's also in a terrible place. It's difficult to provide water, it's right near a heavily-traveled road. But I was wondering, there is the Alameda Creek at the backside, near Marlin Pound Park, and would it be possible to recreate an area somewhat similar to that? The Arroyo or Creek is somewhat incised, so it would require some amount of dirt, or maybe a cofferdam that could be, you know, put up for summer. That would allow the ducks and turtles and frogs and everything else to be relocated fairly close to where they were, would provide a recreational resource. Compared to $20 billion, the cost of moving the dirt would be relatively insignificant. And there is parking there, it could be set back from the road, and you have the creek, which generally flows all year round. It didn't in the drought, but, for a couple of months, but in general, there is a water source there, so that might be an alternative. Also, in regard to the recent talk about polls and advertisement, what the Friends of Livermore 2.0, now called the Community Group or Vibrant Livermore, has caused the City of Livermore sort of a revolving door type of council. They're dedicated idealists, they recruit people who are similar in, in position, but sitting up there, you find that pragmatic realism is a better way to govern, and it takes about a year or two to do that, at which point, you're no longer pure and idealistic, and they want to replace you. So I, I don't think that in the long term is good for Livermore, it takes two or three years to develop the experience in governing, learning about all the committees you serve on, and I just feel that, in the long term, it's not to the benefit of Livermore to have councils that change every two or four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. And by the way, you can download the Springtown Open Space Concept Plan, and alongside the creek, there actually is an existing pond to the north, and there's another existing wetland to the east, so those, those are included in the plan. And finally, Connie Cops.
Hi, I'm Connie Cops, I'm Tulipway, thank you for coming out to the duck pond today, that was nice of you to assess the situation, there are a lot of birds there right now. I'm really unhappy with the whole process of how Springtown, not saying, I'm not saying I'm against the park, I'm not happy with how it happened, I think that you've been, there's been a lot of misinformation to you on the meetings that happen behind closed doors, and I think there's a lot of people that don't come forward because they're fed up. You know, I talk to people, and they're fed up, they don't think they're being heard. I know it appears that they're being heard, I know you've had a lot of meetings, but I saw none of you at those meetings, you know, when, when they were discussing this, 2008 there was a round of meetings, and the current ones. I'm not happy with, I'm kind of happy that the, the park district would be willing to consider, but I don't think it's right that you tell us, you know, when my mom said you were in a blue dress, I said, "No, I'm not," you know? We need to make sure this is what we want as a community, and I know that's what you want, I know that's what you want, but I don't think that it was, the process was fair at all. And I think that John Lawrence left, Tim Berry's leaving us in July without a lot of answered, unanswered questions, and I'm, I'm upset with it. Another thing I'm really upset about is the skate park, that's so close to the HOA land too. Unfortunately, I've known people that have been seriously injured skateboarding, we've lost a couple kids, actually, in Livermore from it. And, you know, when I can't get questions from my HOA and from our city where the boundaries are, I don't want a skate park where these kids are going to be skateboarding up to that park and possibly getting hurt, when I would possibly be liable. Where are the boundaries? What was the deal? My other real major concern is, I overheard somebody say right now that we're going to probably have, how housing across the street from the park. Now, we all know that everybody deserves a little open space, you know, that live here, and we do a pretty good job about tricking it in, and we have in the past. But Springtown, Springtown has open space that's not a lot of fun. You walk, I mean, it's beautiful when you walk down there, but there's something really unsettling about like walking through a corridor and people's backyards are facing you. You really can't get out of it, you know? I don't know where the entrance is or whatever planning to be. But I say you look at Springtown as a whole, because these people deserve a plan, a plan that was thought of together, you know? You need to look at the whole Springtown, and when you write your specific plan, go through, how will this affect that? And I know last, at the last meeting, somebody brought up the fact that there's only two ways in or out, you know, from the city, you know, main corridors. Where was Ivy Street, you know? Where is Highway 50 in regards to where 580 is now? It needs to be looked at as a whole, and the history needs to be respected. Thank you so much, and thanks again for coming out to the duck pond today.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cops. And also, I was at every one of those meetings in 2008, when we were talking about all the efforts in Springtown. I was there for every one of those. It was contentious. There were a couple of questions brought up about the outreach on the Springtown ponds. If you could kind of go over, because I talked to a number of people today about they hadn't heard anything, that they hadn't received any information. I was sort of relaying the number of meetings and the number of flyers that went out and the mailers. So if you could just recount that, I'd appreciate it.
I'd be happy to, thank you. Darren Greenwood, your Public Works Director. First, thanks to the doctor who spoke first, his very kind comments. He's about the only one who sees me as an animal advocate this week. And to Mr. Berry, I think he actually undersold the process that LARPD conducted. Again, the city funded a consultant, but LARPD ran what I thought was a very robust outreach process for the plan development. Just a couple examples. Before they even started with community workshops, they held eight different stakeholder meetings, so city staff, library, HOA, different identified groups around. They had four community workshops, one in January 2017, or two in January, one in April, one in July. There were two different LARPD board meetings where the plan was considered. First, they took comments and then they came back before they adopted it. In addition to all the input during public meetings, LARPD received over 130 emailed comments on the plan. While the plan was being developed, the city also helped publicize the meetings and the events. Staff mailed out over 9,200 notices to Springtown residents advertising the planning workshops. We did mailings in December, April, July, and November, starting in 2016. The process itself lasted almost a full year. Let's see, in addition to the outreach that LARPD and the city did, there were articles in the Independent that ran on February 2nd, April 20th, August 3rd, September 14th, November 2nd, and December 10th, all advertising the meetings, all talking about the options in the plan. Articles ran in advance of every meeting and of every decision point. Let's see, in addition, the LARPD board adopted the plan in November and recommended city adoption. Council considered it on December 11th. At that time, we also gave a report that we were planning on removing the duck pond as one of the initial steps because we have no water source for it. There was an article in the paper before that meeting on December 14th. After the first of the year, starting in January or February, I'm not sure the exact date, but we had signs posted around the pond outlining our full plan for relocating the ducks, sending the turtles to a sanctuary, and eventually draining the ponds. Additional articles ran on March 1st and March 5th in the Independent. And that's kind of the outreach that happened as far as the process. So I understand that people are upset now that they see some action out there. But I would say between LARPD and the city, we made a really good effort to try and get the word out. And then with regard to the plan for draining the pond, one of the things I'd like to get out most, you know, clearly, is there's been a lot of statements on social media the last week or two saying that the city has filled in one of the ponds. We've brought in dirt and we've buried the animals. And that's just not correct. We haven't brought any dirt to the site yet. We were planning to start doing that about last week, but because of the rains, we weren't able to do it. And frankly, some of the ducks had had chicks, so we postponed the whole project. Basically, what we've done now is we've erected a fence along the front for a couple reasons. Pretty soon, we're going to start moving dirt, and it'll be kind of a construction area, so we don't want people getting out there and getting hurt. The second thing is with the ducks starting to nest and stuff, having a fence along there is going to keep them from getting out in the road. Occasionally, the ducks do get out in the road and get hit. I'm afraid if they do that right now, the city will be blamed and it'll be our fault. So having the fence up there offers a little protection for both the public and for the animals themselves. Recall that when we came in December, the reasons that staff recommended taking out the pond now is mainly that we lack a water source. When the golf course went away, we got information from both Fish and Game, but the regional board was the real agency that stepped up and said, no, you can't have this permit anymore. The use has changed, and we're not inclined to reissue a permit for it.
This is the permit to impound the creek water in the back. It used to be used to irrigate the golf course.
Correct.
But it's a temporary impound for the creek water.
Yep, the permit we had allowed us, the permit wasn't really to take the water. We have water rights from Zone 7 that releases the water down the creek. The permit was to install a temporary dam to divert the water into the pond, and then we'd irrigate the remainder of the year with that water. So when we lost that permit, right before this process started, so during the process, we kind of filled the pond from the fire hydrant as an emergency measure because we didn't want to take the pond down while the process was being done. That's not an appropriate use for potable water, especially during the drought. It's an unlined pond, basically per the governor's, you know, DWR's restrictions on using potable water, it has to be a concrete-lined impoundment, recirculated system like our other fountains downtown. That's the only way you can get away with using potable water. So we did it as an interim to keep the pond going during the process, but it's not really appropriate now, so we lack a way to keep the pond full. The other reason frankly is liability. We get reports all the time of the ducks crossing the road. There's a joke in there somewhere about the ducks crossing the road, but I won't say it. The problem is people get out of their car and try and herd the ducks along. And we've been really lucky that someone hasn't cut around traffic thinking they might just hit a bird and end up hitting a person. And that liability might be on the city because it's our property. So because of those reasons, and the other thing frankly is, the animals there were not very healthy because despite having signs up for years, residents fed them too much and the wrong things. So a lot of the birds were deformed with angel wing disease where they couldn't fly anymore. So the decision was made basically to relocate the flightless domestic geese and ducks on the property. We found a shelter that would take them. So we've rounded up in about three batches and have got about 40-plus birds. There is a handful left that are smart, and we've been unable to catch. So at some point before we're done with the project, we'll catch them. The remainder of the mallards and the, you know, migratory birds, once the ponds are filled in, those birds will fly away and find another water source. If they don't, if they can't fly or they stay there, we'll come back and collect them and take them to the same sanctuary we were taking the other ones. The turtles can be relocated to the Bay Area Turtle and Tortoise Rescue, which is approved by Fish and Game. So we found a place to take the turtles. The idea was, as we drain the ponds, we'll have a biologist out to collect all the turtles. The ones that are native would remain on site somewhere, probably the back pond. And the ones that are non-native will be taken to a shelter. So basically, we found homes for all the birds that can't fly on their own. We found a place to take all the turtles, and the only thing that would be euthanized in this is the fish. And that's basically because Fish and Wildlife regulations won't allow us to relocate those to another place for field disease. So Fish and Games, or Fish and Wildlife, has been involved, is aware of our plans, issued us what's called a depredation permit that allows us to take the fish when we're done with the whole operation. So because some baby chicks have popped out now, I haven't seen any more since the first set, and they're already getting bigger, but basically six to eight weeks after the last one's hatched, they'll be ready to, you know, get along without their parents. So along about July, if there's only one clutch of birds, we'll be looking to do the project in July. So what we've done now is just put up a fence, again, to keep people out of the site and to keep the birds from migrating out to the street. And probably in the next week or so, it's a little wet right now because of the rain, it's supposed to rain again this week, we will get people out there to move dirt. The dirt will be stockpiled safely away from the pond, so there's no chance of being on a nest or a bird. And then when we're able to do the project come around July, we'll go ahead and do that.
Just to restate the point, it is now state law that you cannot, you can't fill an outside pond with potable water unless it's concrete lined?
That's my interpretation. I mean, the governor's regulations that came out during the drought, there's a lot of different things on them, but decorative ponds are one of the things listed. For example, medians in the middle of the road anymore, if they have turf, can't be irrigated. So that's how aggressive these regulations are. But the interpretation of the regulation is, unless it's a recirculated pond system, which to us means not an earthen bottom where the water can just go into the ground, it's not okay to use potable water for that.
Okay. And if we were to line it with cement, we would basically have to do the same thing that we're doing now. We'd have to take everything out, and so that wouldn't solve anything.
I don't believe so, no. You'd spend a lot of money lining it and it would have a swimming pool basically, or a fountain.
But you'd have to take everything out of it first.
Yes.
Which would get us to the concern of the community. Okay. All right, thank you for clarification.
Mayor, one thing to add, if you go to the city's website in the search bar, type in Springtown, the first quick link that comes up is Springtown Open Space, and you're providing updates there as well. So if people really want to know what's going on.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Rather than save it for later, I was contacted by a resident, and the upshot of the conversation, I said I would ask what it would cost to build that pond that you just referenced, the cement one, and what would be the capital costs and the operating costs? And you don't have to answer that now, but I did say I would pass that question along.
Okay, to be continued then, okay. Any other questions or comments from, okay? Well, thank you for all your comments tonight, appreciate the input. Okay, on to the consent calendar. Is there any item that, oh, we have 4.01. Let's see, first off, is there any item that anyone wishes to comment on, on the consent calendar? Okay, I just have some comments on 4.03, but we have a comment on 4.01, which is the minutes... Oh, I'm sorry, that's the Municipal Code 2.68 on purchasing and contracts. Ms. Cops.
So I think that competition is always good, and I think that even small contracts we should put out to bid. I also think that our Public Works Department should step it up a little bit. And when there's things going on that Public Works isn't like charge of, I think it should be on our website. There's been, you know, a lot of, like, a lot of digging in Springtown, and when I'd call the city, no one seemed to know what was going on. When I'd ask the employees politely what's going on, some of them didn't speak English. I just think it's really important, that I think competition is really good, and I think that you should invite competition, even if it is small numbers. You know, I bet it's not a lot of money to put that concrete pond in, and maybe somebody could do it really nice, like it used to be with a fountain in it, and there used to be a fountain in it, and maybe that isn't a lot of money, and maybe that should be looked at, you know? I mean, there should be options, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cops. The minutes to be, arrive next time? Minutes of the, yeah, next time. There was a lot of conversation, I mean, so I just presume that that's, they'd be coming the next time, but just that we do notice this stuff. Just a comment on 4.03. That's the single track and concurrent review of the General Plan Amendment and the Zoning Map Amendment for the plan development and future affordable housing at the City Hall campus. And I think this really is a remarkable opportunity here to provide the affordable housing on the City Hall campus site. And what I find very troubling is that there have been a number of people speaking to this council saying that they do not want affordable housing in this community. And I find that very troubling because we are looking to bring in, this is for homeless veterans, for the elderly that need housing in our community. And the message that I'm hearing is that if you have served this community, and if you have served this nation, that they don't want you here. They don't want you to live in this community because somehow you don't deserve to live here because you're not rich. And I think we owe a debt of gratitude to the people that have served this nation and served this community, and that we should be able to help them live here because if you've served this community and this nation that long, you're obviously a resource, and you're somebody that's got information that we need. So I am all in favor of being able to provide affordable housing here in Livermore for the elderly and for the veterans that have served this community so well. So with that, I'd be willing to take a motion for the consent calendar.
So I'll move we accept the consent calendar?
Okay, moved by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Councilmember Coonber. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously, thank you. 5.01, this is the police tow franchises. This is to adopt a resolution awarding the unexclusive franchises for the city towing service. And we have Jason Boeburg and Chief Harris stepping up.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Michael Harris. I'm honored to serve as your police chief. And with me tonight is Lieutenant Jason Boeburg, who is one of our watch commanders and is also the manager of our traffic unit. And he will be presenting the staff report tonight on the franchise tow.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Got it. The city has a need to utilize towing companies for non-consensual police towing services. A non-consensual tow occurs in certain situations regulated by state law. An example would be when an officer stops someone driving a vehicle for a suspended or revoked license, and they intend to store or impound the driver's vehicle. Non-consensual tow's are not intended to govern situations where towing has been requested by the vehicle's owner or a private property owner, except as permitted by law. The city is authorized by state law to adopt and implement a mechanism for safe and efficient towing and vehicle impoundment. The city may impose fees to recover its actual and reasonable costs incurred in connection with the towing program. On October 12th, 2016, the city of Livermore adopted revised Municipal Code Section 5.44, which is the Police Tow Service Franchise Ordinance, creating the opportunity for tow companies to submit qualifications for consideration to be placed and maintained on a rotation tow list to provide non-consensual police towing services for the Livermore Police Department for a period of three years. A request for proposal was generated to identify tow truck operators intending to operate as franchisees for the city. The following tow operator submitted proposals to provide police department tow services as part of the franchise agreement. Advanced Auto, Allen's Automotive and Towing, Inc., Central Towing and Transport, Norm's Towing, Arlance Tow, and Save Tow. With the exception of Advanced Auto, all of the proposed franchisees are currently providing non-consensual police towing services for the city of Livermore without a franchise agreement. As part of the RFP process, all potential franchisees submitted hourly rate fee schedules and storage rates that would be included in the franchise agreement. They base their proposed rates on their bids to the California Highway Patrol. CHP conducts a fee acceptance process related to tow franchise charging rates throughout the state in an attempt to keep the fees, the fee schedules reasonable and competitive. Proposed rates for the city of Livermore fell between $200 and $240 per hour, and $75 to $85 a day for storage, as dependent on indoor or outdoor storage. An additional category for non-skilled labor was also included with the rates, between $50 and $120 per hour. Upon review of the RFP and Qs, it appeared that all six operators who submitted proposals were qualified to become franchisees. LPD recently followed up on information obtained subsequent to this meeting agenda being published and determined that one of the applicants, Advanced Auto, does not meet the requirements of the RFP and Q. All other tow applicant proposals have been reviewed by staff and meet the requirements of the RFP and Q. Costs related to the administration of the tow franchise program are expected to be recovered under the tow franchise fee schedule, which all granted franchisees would be required to pay on an equally shared basis. The annual shared cost among participating franchisees will be $11,218 for the first year with a 5% escalator built into the fee schedule. Some of the identified benefits of having a tow franchise agreement are that it is... Some of the identified benefits of having a tow franchise agreement are that it establishes consistent towing regulations in the best interest of the city and the public. The RFP and Q process ensures the best possible tow truck operators for our non-consensual police tow's. It gives authority to the chief of police to suspend tow operator abilities for violations of the franchise agreement. It covers the cost by the city to administer the franchise program, and it's likely to increase the tow operator's sense of commitment to providing non-consensual police towing services to the community. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution granting a non-exclusive tow franchise to the following companies. Allen's Automotive and Towing, Inc., Central Towing and Transport, Norm's Towing, Arlance Tow, and Save Tow. Staff does not recommend granting a non-exclusive tow franchise to Advanced Auto at this time. Staff also recommends the city council authorize the city manager to execute a non-exclusive franchise agreement for tow services with the approved tow companies.
Questions for staff? Quick question. Section nine, scene cleanup.
Yes, sir.
And of course, you guys, I know everybody hates anecdotes, but there are times I've driven by accident scenes that have been cleaned up, and there's still broken glass and, you know, bumpers and plastic and taillight lenses and the like. Has anybody, in the, in the agreement, it says that they can be removed from the rotation list if they don't clean up a site. Have we ever removed anybody from the, the rotation list for non-compliance?
Not that I'm aware of, but, but this agreement will assist us in regulating the different companies and ensuring that they follow through on the requirements, and that is one of the requirements.
Okay. So if, if it ever happens again, and I'm sure it won't, I know who to call. Okay. Great. Thank you. And, right, as I read this with the advanced towing... So I do have a card. Mr. Scott?
I'd like to make a comment on a legal case in Kings County, Washington, where a man with, a homeless man was living in his car, was asked to move that car, and he couldn't because of the mechanical state of that car. And he went to work and he came back, and the car was towed. This man proceeded to go to court on it with the help of Columbia Legal Services, be parallel to our Bay Area Legal Services, and he sued in Superior Court. And he actually won. He won under Washington State Homestead Act. It was his home. Amazingly enough, the Homestead Act, one of the ideas is to prevent homelessness. So I think we have to be judicious because there very well could be protection under the California State Homestead Act if people are living in their car and it's their home. Thank you.
Interesting point. Let's, I'll kick this one over to the city attorney. Any, I know that we have a, an ordinance that if a car is left abandoned for a certain number of days, that it can be towed, if it's an abandoned vehicle.
There's, there are various ordinances in the Streets and Highways Code that regulate how long a car can be left along a roadway. Seventy-two hours is the shortest amount of time. If it's tagged, it can be towed under that statute. Livermore does not have an ordinance that prohibits sleeping vehicles, though, so I think it's important to note that as well.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any comments? Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of item 5.01.
Seconded by Vice Mayor, moved by Councilmember Spodowski. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Stentions? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to 6.01. This is the rescission of resolution...
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. If I may...
Did I miss something?
I believe the moving party was Councilmember Spodowski. I didn't catch the second, though.
Moved by Councilmember Spodowski, seconded by Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thought maybe I'd skipped a groove or something there. Oh, sorry. Okay. This is rescission of resolution 2002-255, employee compensation policy. Mr. Alessio.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Doug Alessio. I'm your administrative services director. The item is not just rescinding REZO 2002-255, it's also a contemplation of an updated compensation policy for the city. So a little background on this policy. First off, it supports your stated council goals of long-term financial stability, but as your administrative services director, I'm responsible for, and frequently tasked with negotiating your labor agreements with your four different bargaining units. Each time that I have undertaken this task over the past eight years, the very first conversation we have at the table is, hey, is council going to direct you to follow their adopted policy of paying us in the 75th percentile of our comparator agencies? So the last round of negotiations in consultation with council during a closed session, you all asked that I contemplate changing the compensation policy and bringing you an updated and revised policy. So I want to start by sort of summarizing the previous policy. Turn it around. It's on. Neil, you want to hit the next slide for me? Great. So this is a summary of your previous policy. It was approved in 2002, and it basically had five points, three of which are pretty good and two which are causing problems. The first point was, the whole policy is contingent on the overall fiscal health of the city as a consideration. That's a good policy point. It defined the labor market by listing the cities and agencies to be used in salary surveys, which is the same agencies that have been, being used since the early 80s. Those include the city of Andiok, the city of Fremont, the city of Hayward, the city of Pleasanton, the city of San Leandro, the city of Tracy, the city of Union City, the city of Modesto, and the city of Milpitas. It also includes three special districts, so that some of our enterprise funds that might not have representations with other cities, we'd have enough entities to survey. That included Dublin, San Ramon Valley Services District, Ora Loma Sanitary District, and Union Sanitary District. It also stated the city's intent to conduct annual salary surveys, which we do not currently do. It's a very intensive and costly process, and we only conduct salary surveys in preparation for negotiations. It also rightfully says that the salary surveys would include pay and benefit. So in the human resource field, doing a total compensation survey is industry best practice because, as you're aware, that it's not just our pay, but our pension and various benefits that make up compensation that we should be comparing and not just straight salary. And the last item, which tends to be the most problematic for me, negotiating, is that the goal was to imply employee compensation at 75th percentile or the upper quartile of the defined market. So the city has not actually ever paid anyone the 75th quartile, and have always pointed to the fiscal ability to do so as the reason not to comply with the policy. So the policy that was attached to your staff report basically outlines our current practices. So it, it states that our total compensation should hover around 75% of our operating costs. Okay? That if, if you regularly are higher than 75 or lower than 75, you'll end up creating problems. If you're lower than 75, you're probably going to be below market with your comparator agencies and have problems attracting and retaining people. If you're above 75, too much of your resources is going to people, and you won't have enough left over for other items. It, it contains several important considerations, salary structure principles. Those are things like, we have pay bands that have different steps in them that are 5% apart for each classification. So each classification typically has a, a salary scale that has a 25% growth potential in it. It talks about classification level differentiation. So this is the difference between an entry level or a journey level or an advanced journey level, and how much pay should separate those types of experience and skill sets. Internal equity. This is where, how much more should a manager make than somebody they manage? How much more should a supervisor make than somebody they're responsible for supervising? And then it also defines our labor market. So in meeting with our bargaining units, what we discovered was that they, the list of cities they felt was out of date. The list of cities is based upon cities of similar size and construct, that they're not like Dublin that contracts out services, that they provide the same sort of services we do, that they have the same relative population, those sort of items. And so they took particular offense to Modesto being a comparator agency and asked that we could do something about that. So we did a little bit of research, and we're proposing to you that we actually, Modesto and the city of Milpitas are, were, Modesto was the lowest paying city on the list and Modesto the highest. So we're recommending we remove those two and replace them with the city of Brentwood and the city of Manteca. All of our bargaining units have heard this proposal, they understand it and actually are supportive of it. Changing out those two cities for the other two cities I mentioned doesn't materially change your compensation structure. There's less than a half a percent deviation that that would trigger in four years from now when your current labor contracts are up. The other thing that it does is define our labor market not by giving you just a list of cities, but it talks about things like attraction and retention, and when those become a factor. Because to us, that's a bigger indicator that we're in the proper market, is are we able to attract and retain competent and qualified staff? And the last piece is that we'll do salary surveys before we sit down and negotiate when contracts are up, and we, instead of doing them annually. So the big changes are, we're not striving to be in the uppermost quartile, we're actually striving to be right in the middle of our comparator agencies, and that we're switching out two of the entities. So to give you an idea, if you could, this, the city's cost as a percentage of operating for the past 10 years fluctuates anywhere between the low of 70% all the way up to about 80%. So in the current year, we're about exactly 75% of operating budget is spent on employees, not just pay, but compensation and all costs associated with Medicare taxes, workers' comp. So if you hit the next slide, and, and this is just a, a nice representation to show you, for the general fund, both pieces put together is your, your general fund operating budget. The deep blue piece represents the amount you spend on people, and the light blue piece is on other things, equipment, tools, capital projects, things like that. So that is my report. If you have any questions about the policy, I'm here to answer.
Questions for Councilmember Carling?
So you mentioned, the point being, you want to keep a happy, happy and productive staff. What is our turnover? Do you know what it is off the top of your head, and what would be a healthy turnover rate?
Sure. So I don't have the rate off the top of my head, but we do not have a retention or attention problem. Every time that we open a job, we end up with a slew of qualified applicants. Usually our turnover occurs for retirements. We actually have an aging workforce right now, and so, you know, if, if you look at just the, the raw data around ages, we'll be turning over a significant portion of our workforce in the next three years.
Due to retirement.
Due to retirement. It is infrequent where we actually have an employee that, that leaves employment here for another agency. It happens probably about two or three times a year.
Okay. Thanks.
What is remarkable is during the Employee Service Awards, the number of people that are there that have been here for 20, 30, even 40 years, and like, nobody's here for five, you know, because they're all here for, for a much longer period of time. It's just one of the gratifying things about seeing people that have been here that long. Councilmember Coonber?
Just a, a quick suggestion is that it, it's taken 16 years to revisit this policy again. Can we somehow put it on a cycle that we maybe go five years? Because things change with employment law quickly, we never know what we may have to review by, you know, state or federal mandate or whatever, but taking a look at this and re-reviewing it with the super high growth of some of the agencies that we're now aligning with, you know, I don't want to be left here as the only small 84,000 person town on the list, and make sure that we're getting compensated fairly.
Sure. We clearly implemented any labor laws as necessary, and the policy actually calls for review of the policy every five to seven years.
Any questions? Vice Mayor?
A couple of questions, but want to preface it with, I think this makes a lot of sense, you know, based on the number of negotiations I've participated in over the years, but this seems reasonable, and I'm glad to hear that you've worked it through with all of the represented employees, and they also believe that makes sense. I just want to make sure I, I heard this, that the, the target is in the middle of the comparator agencies.
That is correct.
Okay. And everybody's clear on that. And I also like the, having a, you know, a goal for where the personnel costs should hover, around 75%? I mean, one way to do it is go spend more money on another area, right? Then you can do it, but presuming that's not going to be the, the solution. But do, do we have, with respect to these policies, do we have comparisons of how other cities do it? I mean, where, and I'm not saying that you need to answer this now, but one thing that could be of interest is, how does this policy compare with what others do in terms of best practice? So we, we've said hover around 75% of operating expenses. It'd be interesting to see what percentage it is for those comparator groups.
So I don't have the data handy.
Yeah, I wouldn't think you did. So I'm just saying, my request is you just, I'm, I'm curious, and I'm, I'm in favor of this, but I would, I think it would be helpful as we do the periodic review and everything is to have that available.
Certainly can provide that in the future.
And just to underscore that we are consistent, as a fact that we haven't met the 75th percentile for employee compensation, neither have we ever been close to that for the council and mayor compensation. We are, we are well below the 75th percentile on that, and that has been the choice of this council because we believe the investment is, is well made in our, in the staff that make the city operate, so, but we're consistent nonetheless. Okay. So with that, any further discussion on the item? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of 6.01.
Beat you.
Got you.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Spodowski.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Carling. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There is consensus on the comparator agencies. I know that's one of the, whenever I've been in negotiations, that was always the big battle, was picking those comparator agencies. So well done on that. Okay. So with that, we are at the matters initiated and council reports. Councilmember Coonber?
Let me start off with the April 2nd LAVSA meeting, which I attended, and we had a lot of administrative stuff to get through in about five minutes. It was one of the faster meetings since Councilmember Spodowski was the chair of that Sterling Unit.
Run it.
There were lots of leftover April Fools jokes and immediately following, but other than that, yeah, it was, is a good roundup. We got some, some small financial details out of the way.
Okay. Councilmember Carling?
Yes, thanks. We didn't have committee reports last time we met, so I have several, actually. So I participated in the Employee Service Awards that the mayor just mentioned earlier back in February, a couple of Stop Waste meetings during March, participated in the Bay East Association of Realtors, so mayor was participating in that as well. It was interesting, somebody had come up from Southern California to talk about the state and housing in the state, and it's a bit eye-opening, some of the information that he provided. And it's, I suppose no wonder housing costs are so high in the state, if you look at the amount of housing that's being, or the lack of housing that's being built. the amount of housing that's being, or the lack of housing that's being built. On March 15th, I went to the swearing in with some of the new officers, and that was always an honor to participate in that and see those folks take on these important duties for all of us here in the city. On the 21st of March, the mayor was out of town, I think you were in Sacramento, as I remember, right? I stood in for the mayor and youth and government day, and that was fun. And so actually, a young woman that was part of the Livermore City Youth Program, she actually spoke at our last meeting to give a report. She shadowed me, shadowed me is probably an overstatement of what we did, because she, we spent an hour talking about what the mayor and the city council does, so it was interesting. And then those folks, actually, that were shadowing other members of the staff, police, the fire, and some of the staff that helped make the city up and run and operate, then conducted their own mock council meeting. And then we, oh, had lunch after that. So that was youth and government, and a lot of enthusiastic kids out there, I mean, not just seniors either, there are sophomores, juniors, and seniors, I think, participating. And then on the 29th, I was invited to participate in the Innovation Awards down at the Fox Theater. I think the mayor was there too, I saw your picture up, were you there?
At the Fox? No, because I was at...
They had your picture up on the screen.
Yes, I was there. No, actually, I was at the, and there was an event with...
Well, I wonder if they got the picture then?
Yeah.
Because I know you're up there, I saw you.
I'm always at those.
Yeah, okay, well, anyway, it was interesting. I mean, it, so I was actually invited to sit at the Stop Waste table, and it's, it's an interesting, there was actually a company from Livermore that was nominated, they didn't win, but it was, it's, it's an interesting mix of technologies and innovation that the people in the Bay Area are developing, and, and it's just, it's just fun to watch, including different types of food. I mean, most of us think about tech, you know, high-tech kinds of stuff, and new apps for your iPhone or your iPad, but it's also new food, and what you could do with soy, for example, and it's really pretty interesting. So those are some of the things I participated in since, I guess, the last time we discussed committee reports. That's it.
So you spent an hour talking at Youth Government Day about how the city council only does two meetings a month, right?
Yeah, well, no, not exactly.
And all of the other 30 committees that we're on. Oh, great, thank you, sincerely thank you for covering those.
Oh, sure, no, it was my pleasure.
Because there's a lot of places that we need to be, and so, thank you.
No, my pleasure, yeah.
Councilmember Spodowski?
I'd like to know when the next Youth Government Day is, because if they have a three-minute comment period, I'll show up and maybe, maybe take inspiration from Mr. Quinsey and try and, you know...
I have done that, and it's a lot of fun.
Yeah, that's, I, that, you know, I need to know when the next one is, please, anyway. Yeah, it has been a while since we've done updates, so I'll just do a quick three general. The only thing I have to add from Councilmember Kummer's update with LAVTA is that we do have the new bus wraps out there. So if you see, we had white buses for a while because we were trying to decide on the design, and Gillig just came up with a great design that looks like an American flag with our regular route, and then with the rapid, it's kind of green and blue. Great design if it's not covered in advertisements, because we desperately need the revenue. So that's, that's kind of new for LAVTA. East Bay Community Choice Energy, commercial, commercial customer rollout should be happening soon, so those of you who own businesses in town should be receiving information about switching over from PG&E to the new East Bay Community Energy. The general public rollout's happening around September, so people should also start seeing information about that. And then the Tri-Valley San Joaquin Regional Rail Working Group is still regionally working for rail. We had, I think, one or two meetings since the last council meeting, and we're just receiving additional information about station options and cost and things like that. But one item, it's not a matters initiated, it's just for a point of reference, people earlier were saying possibly cement or concrete over and turn it into a pond or a fountain feature. I'm currently working on a project during, for my day job, of a 6,000-square-foot fountain that needs resurfacing, and that current cost is estimated at about $380,000. The Springtown Pond is about 37,000 square feet, so you can kind of get a little bit, I don't know if we need staff. If we do need information, I have it, if we have to go down that route, but also the annual operating water costs are around 50K for that, and that's a 6,000 compared to 36,000. So you kind of get the picture of how much it would cost us if we were to convert that into something else, so, that's it.
Vice Mayor Werner?
Okay, I'll start with the Altamont Open Space Committee meeting that I attended a while ago, and that, and in that meeting, we decided to write a letter in support of Senator Glazer's legislation that would allow eventually for that park to be, the Tesla Park, to be bought, if the state could sell it. So that is an enabling legislation, so we wrote a letter as from that committee in support of it, and so my request is that we follow through with Nancy Rodriguez's request that the city also submit a letter, if it's still possible to do that, per her request at the last council meeting. So we get, looks like we got enough heads nodding on that. Okay, good. Then, following up on the, on the Duck Pond, because there seems to be a lot of energy around it, so I, if possible, and I don't know what the information we have on the website, but if, just documenting what it would cost to build one out of cement would be of interest. And the other point I think is significant, is we would have to go through what we're going through right now, even if we were to go down that path. So we're not kind of losing anything, and the opportunity might be there in the future, and I'm, is curious, Mr. Stein made a suggestion, and I don't know the feasibility of that, but if a paragraph just speaking to that as well might be helpful, because people are asking questions, so if it's, if it's possible to do that, I would request that. And then the final thing, read the letter on Travarna Road, I've read the thing here, is there a way to, I would request that, I'd like to understand the situation better, and perhaps we could get a, an analysis from staff sent to the council and the residents?
Yeah, the staff, as you noted, will be following up with the residents out there, and we'll go ahead and send a memo out to council on that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, March 1st, there was a, we're going way back on this one. March 1st, there was a Water Liaison Meeting where we were discussing indirect potable reuse. March 8th was, I attended a BART board meeting where I spoke about the BART DEIR, which concluded that the most cost-effective means of making that connection would be full BART to Livermore. There's a LAFCO meeting followed, following that one. March 12th, the Alameda County Transportation Commission, the I-580 express lane and planning policy, meetings were held, the, we talked about the SB 1 repeal effort, I got an update on that, and RM 3 will be placed on the ballot, and that's raising the bridge tolls. Absolutely fascinating program on March 13th, it was put together by the Livermore High School and Granada High School students. The chief was there, Chief of Police and I were there, Superintendent Kelly Bowers, the school board president, and Congressman Swalwell, and Supervisor Hagerty's officers were represented there as well, talking about the campus mass shootings and student safety. And it was a very frank and very engaging conversation with the students, and it shows that they're taking this very much to heart, and very much want to make a change in, in society. On the 14th, was the Altamont San Joaquin Valley Regional Rail Authority. We discussed possible locations for a San Joaquin diesel multiple unit or electric multiple unit conveyance. That night was the Alameda County Mayor's Conference, where we had a presentation from the USGS on hay wired, and that's their rolling up to a earthquake simulation, and how fast everybody would recover on that. Interesting program. As was mentioned, the police swearing in. On Sunday, there was a, the poet Laureate for Livermore had a science and poetry program at the library, it was a lot of fun. Kids that had written poetry from the first grade all the way up to people in their advanced years, shall we say. It was fascinating how combining the poetry and the, and the science. The 20th, East Bay EDA also provided an update, I'm sorry, that's Economic Development Alliance, provided an update on SB 1, RM 3, and a recap of the legislative day that we had in Sacramento on March 7th. On March 21st, we had the Tri-Valley Mayor's Delegation in Sacramento, where we talked with a number of our legislative representatives, including Senator Weiner, and we spoke extensively about SB 827, which would allow eight-story buildings near a bus stop. So he actually was listening and admitted that it would probably need to go back for significant amendments, but he lives in a 30-unit condo, and he believes that it's a great mistake for people to have single-family homes, that everybody should be living in smaller homes. The 22nd of March was the Alameda County Transportation Commission meeting, and there was a proposal from Union City to potentially redirect Measure B funds for about $320 million. It's a very contentious debate on that. It was voted to allow them to continue the study, but to not release the funds, so that'll probably be coming back. On the 22nd, also following the ACTC was the Lawrence Lab Foundation, and they're looking to help, as I mentioned at the Lawrence Elementary School, that education is not lighting a, it's not filling a bucket. Education is not filling a bucket, it's lighting a fire, and the Livermore Lab Foundation is giving us a new box of matches. So it's very exciting to see how they're getting kids fired up on education. Saturday, the 24th, the Hindu Community and Cultural Center had their annual grant and aid program, and the police and the fire departments were represented there as well, and they gave away tens of thousands of dollars to help nonprofits, both here in our community and around the world. March, April 3rd, I attended a Bay Area Council Symposium at the University of Pacific on transit. Very interesting, I talked about connecting the mega-region from the housing centers in San Joaquin Valley to the job centers in Silicon Valley and San Francisco. This is the first of many meetings. And today, we had AC, Alameda County Transportation Commission, the 580 six, or the 580 express lanes, 5.35 million trips so far this fiscal year. The number of trips per the month of February was 28,000 in 2017, it's almost 32,000 this year. So there's an increase of 3,600 vehicles traveling those lanes, and that money is staying in that corridor as we raise those funds. And the toll went anywhere from $3.40 to $9.50, and all that money is staying right here in the corridor. After that meeting, I went to the, and spoke for a couple of hours at the Springtown Pond, and I guess I talked to a lot of folks and talked to a lot of people to, I'd answer their questions, because one of the things that I made very clear is that despite the, the social media and the videos that were up, it was absolutely untrue that no, careful if I phrase this, what they had said on the videos was absolutely untrue, and in fact, there were no animals buried on the site, because you could see that there were no tire treads, no tractor treads, in the very smooth mud, which was evidenced as the pond had been drained, and you could see where the, there had been no dirt brought onto that site or into the pond. So we, it looks like we were able to get the information out. A lot of the people had not been aware of it, and I explained what Mr. Greenwood told us today about the 9,200 mailers, but they were appreciative that we were there and providing information, and that we cared enough to show up. With that, the one matter initiated, and this is just kind of thrown out there, I was shocked to see in the, in the news that there is two and a half billion, billion dollars in mental health funds that have been allocated at the state and at the county and local level, state funds, and they have not yet been spent. And we keep talking about the need for mental health care, and the fact that there's two and a half billion dollars out there waiting to be spent, I just think is a travesty. And also, there's $2 billion in funds allocated for homelessness that are from the state and have not been allocated. So how can we best engage the state and the counties to free those, those dollars up? And you guys work in this realm as well, so how do we best engage our, our other elected representatives to release those funds, so that we can get them into the community and start doing some good? Okay?
Could I add to that, just?
No.
Just, I, I think it'd also be worth understanding, not, I think, how to best engage is a really good thing. Could we understand a little bit about what, what happened, or why it's not moving?
Well, in some cases, the, some of the, the mental health dollars, they haven't been really clear on how those funds should be spent. So until they make it clear how they should be spent, they're not going to spend them, because then they may, somebody may ask for them back, so that's part of it. But, yeah, so wherever staff can, can help us out on that, I would appreciate it. And finally, the city of Livermore's first town historian, Gary Drummond, passed away last week. He was a remarkable individual, and he was able to bring history alive for, for so many people in this community. He had a tour through the downtown with third graders, and he referred to the building where the independent is now, that was Livermore's first skyscraper, as he said. And as you go through Ann Holman's book about Livermore history, Gary Drummond is mentioned frequently in there as the source of the information, because he really was passionate about preserving yesterday's history for the generations of tomorrow. So with that, I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory and honor of Livermore's first town historian, Gary Drummond. Thank you.